Work session of September 5th order. At this time, I'm going to introduce Bill Pezzet, who's going to update us on the committees and what's going on with the...
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening. I've been...I think the council on an individual basis is pretty much aware of most of the things I'm going to say tonight, but Ralph thought it would be a good idea if we brought everyone up to date at the same time. As you know, the public reaction to the DVD rollout was very enthusiastic, and basically, people were asking, "Where do we go from here?" Council members, private citizens, where do we go from here? And in working with Pat Sabatini, who I know wanted to have a marketing component for the town, we developed an Economic Development Strategic Planning Committee, and it's made up of people with significant and specific skill sets in that area, and a very hard-working group. And we've been meeting for two months now, and the purpose is to...it's threefold, to advance tourism in town, to advance housing and housing sales, and commercial investment. We're going to do three things. We're going to identify the current state of the town, what are our assets and what are our challenges, you know, where are we in a marketing sense in that regard, in an economic development sense. Then we're going to lay out a practical vision for the future, and then we're going to lay out a plan for how to get there. And after we do all that, we're going to present it to council in whatever format you like, and we'll have a dialogue about it. And if you like it, you know, you adopt it, and if you have concerns, we tweak it and work on it some more. One of the things that I think...the point here is that you guys have done a tremendous job. The town looks good, the public places are great, and you're continuing to move forward. You can't do it all. From the people we talked to, if you really want your town, any town, to move to the next level, you need to have private sector, public sector, elected officials, service groups, businessmen, everyone walking in the same path and talking the same language. So that's what we're trying to develop. We're trying to reach out to business people and...for example, we do so many good things. We had private citizens put on that fireworks display over the Delaware Bridge across the Delaware to Burlington. It was wonderful. We're going to have the Do-Op concert. We're going to have Italian Day, Historic Bristol Day. And the people that know marketing say those things should feed off each other, and there are things you can do that aren't that difficult that helps advance that. So that's part of what we're talking about. I've talked to Ralph and Pat about this. Pat is the council liaison to the group. And what we've done is we tried to brainstorm, what are some other towns similar to Bristol that have had a lot of success? And two that came up are Collingswood, New Jersey, and Conshohocken, because they had similar demographics, similar blue-collar nature of their community, and they've done some things to really turn themselves around. And what we did was we reached out to Collingswood. Their mayor there, his name's James Malley. Apparently, he is a very dynamic, articulate, passionate guy about his work. He's an attorney, but he's really passionate about what he does for the town. And we've invited him to come to Bristol. So we're going to do the same thing that we did for the DVD rollout. We have the Bristol Riverside Theater reserved. We're going to try to fill it, and we're going to invite everyone to come. We hope the entire official family of the borough comes, and we've talked about that, and as well as service groups, businessmen, and private citizens. And we're going to just pick this guy's brain a little bit about, you know, what happened in Collingswood that was successful? What did you do that you wish you didn't do, and what would you do again? Just those kinds of things to start a dialogue. So what we're trying to do is keep a broad base of citizens in town interested and enthused, and at the same time, hopefully, provide you with a service that you'll find useful. So that's it in a nutshell, and I'll be happy to answer questions.
I think the question, Billy, that you keep referring to council because you want to keep us informed, but I also respect the fact that you want to make sure the entire council supports what you're doing.
Absolutely.
Because you're putting a lot of time and effort...
Absolutely.
...and your committees are into what you're doing.
Right.
And I know Pat stays involved through a liaison with council, but I just want to make sure the entire council is in favor of what you're doing, and I don't think anybody's opposed to it. So I mean, I know when you call and say, "We want to do this," you think council or mine...
Right.
I think that, you know, you guys are doing a great job, and I think we should just keep moving this along and see how it goes.
Thank you.
I think bringing the mayor in is going to be a plus. I think, you know, you learn by everybody's mistakes, and I think that's...
I think it's a credit to the borough that, you know, we're willing to reach out like that, so I think it's going to be a good night. And what we have to do, of course, I'm going to...it's for the benefit of the public that's watching. It's October 9th, 7:00, Bristol Riverside Theater. There's a wine and cheese that follows. It's $10 to get in. It's a nominal fee, and the money will be used to support the marketing of this. All the money goes into the borough. And tickets are available at Mignone's Jewelry, Great IDs by Ann, and the Bristol Borough Tax Office. One of the things, we invited the Bucks County Planning Commission to attend our last meeting. Lynn Bush, the executive director, came. She was very impressed by what we're doing, very enthused, and wants to help, and we said, "Well, you know, talk to the council, talk to the manager to make sure that, you know, everybody's on the same page." So I don't know if she's reached out to you yet, but if you can just...
What she did, she reached out to the manager and said that she just wants to make sure the council is aware of what's going on and that council supports your organization. And again, if nobody's opposed to that, you know, just keep moving in the right direction.
Right. And what she found was that she thought that we were really doing the thing she was going to do anyway, but we still think she would be an asset. We also contacted the Bucks County Tourism Commission, and they're going to send a representative to meet with the people from the theater who are chairing the tourism part of this. So we're reaching out any way we can, and I appreciate your support. It's a lot of work, and it's a lot of time.
A lot of time, and I know there's meetings going on...
Yeah.
...constant with different...I know you broke it down into four or five different groups.
We have a tourism group, a housing group, and a commercial investment group. And we meet...normally, we meet the first Wednesday of the month in the community room here. It was booked this month because you guys changed your council meeting, and Congressman Fitzpatrick has some constituent service in there. So that's where we are, and I'd like to encourage any of you to stop in and partake in the meeting. I know you're out several nights a week, but if you want to do that, we'd love to have you.
Just so you know, I just spoke to council, and we're going to meet again on Wednesday in October, because Columbus Day is on a Monday, and Tuesday, the mayor's coming in from Collingswood.
Do you mean we're following that?
So we're going to meet Wednesday.
Okay.
But you're still...
But I think we can still be there, right? Yeah, because Fitzpatrick will be there.
Yeah, it should be fine for you guys to meet.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Pezzet? Pat?
Yes, I'd like to just say that Mr. Pezzet has constantly been in touch with myself, keeping me up to date on everything that's going on. He also broke down the DVD group into the different elements that we had talked about, and it's really moving in a positive direction. We've yet to have anybody as a naysayer or saying this, that, "It's not right, this is not..." Everybody's on the same page, and I'd like to thank Bill for all that time he puts in and the effort he does, and constantly in touch with me and let me know, and if something does come up, Mr. De Giuseppe, the council president knows that I'm pressing it in. So, I mean, we got a team...Mr. Pezzet has put a team together that would probably win the National Baseball League.
Pat, can you give me Mr. Pezzet's phone number? I'd like to have it.
All right. Baron Ivanchenko is chairman of the committee. Amy Kazar from the theater is chairman of the tourism subcommittee. Mark Swift is chairman of the commercial investment, and Ralph De Giuseppe III is chairman of the housing committee. So we have a real competent group of people and a lot of support staff, and it's real good. So thank you very much for your support. It's all positive, no hidden agendas, and we'll keep you posted, okay?
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Herbie?
First thing, we're still working, and we continue to work the carbon monoxide alarms and the smoke alarms both. We completed the redevelopment grant for the police fire and EMA radios. That project came out to about $515,000 for the radios. And the demon grant for the fire department radios, we expect that there'll be some movement and some notifications to go out during the month of September. And once they start doing the awards, they'll continue on until all the money's awarded. And most people seem to think that since it's an election year, they're going to try and push that money out as quick as possible. And then the last thing is, everybody's seen the things on the smart meters. That continues to be out there. We have had one fire in Bristol, which was directly related to a smart meter in Harriman. So...
Herbie, I'd be lying to you. I know you said everyone. I don't know what that is.
Yeah, neither do I, Greg.
The electric company has a program where they're replacing all of the old, what they called analog, electric meters with a smart meter. Those meters, they'll be able to take readings off the meters directly, radio frequency kind of a thing. They'll also be able to apparently shut your...one thing I read was, and I don't know if it's true or not, but they would be able to turn your electric on or off through the meter, be able to control it. There's...if you Google it on a computer, you'll come up with millions of hits related to smart meters, not just in Pennsylvania, not just PICO, Maryland, British Columbia, Australia. There's a lot of controversy over these meters. One, in reference to fires, you'll find out there's been fires everywhere that they've installed these meters in the world. There's also some people have had issues, and it's hard to tell on the internet whether it's valid or not, whether...where people feel they're being subjected to radio frequency waves that are affecting their health, and that's a whole different issue, but beyond my scope of expertise.
I saw that on TV. Are they planning on replacing them?
Well, apparently, they've replaced some. The other thing that they've announced is that they've pushed out a software update, which is supposed to make the meter safer, that if there's a problem with the meter, it will automatically shut down. There's supposed to be a second software update where, if there's something going on with the meter, it'll actually send a signal back to PICO so that they're aware that there's an issue with the meter. My recommendation...and there is a phone number that anybody can call, a direct line to PICO. It's a hotline, and they'll come out. If you have a concern about your meter or your wiring, they'll come out and take a look at it for you. Everything that I've read so far, not just with PICO, is that the electric companies say that the problem is not with the meters, but that there's some type of fault in the wiring in the person's home.
Here's what I understand. I was talking to State Senator Tommy Tomlinson, who's been on top of this, and he said to me that there is a software that they're trying to install, and basically, they found most of the problems are with 60-amp fuses, the old fuse of service, or the old 60-amp breakers to push buttons, because the outside service cable that goes to your home that comes in can't handle the load of this meter, and the meter doesn't recognize that it's overheating, and that's how the service cable starts firing. Homes are burning down. So if you have like a new 200-amp service and you have a new service cable, you're basically not going to have an issue. But it's the old why, like you were saying, the old why, that they're putting this program in, apparently, that'll read back to them that the meter may be overheating or the wire, and they can shut your electric off, because a lot of people elected to save money by saying, "In peak demand, we're going to turn your power off for 20...in 20 minutes at a time for maybe the next four hours," or however that program works. So I know he's on top of that, and he said, "Once they really know what's going on, he's going to notify the borough and, you know, send a letter to council and bring everybody up to date." But there are issues with the meters.
If anybody...the phone number, if anybody in town is concerned about their meter or their wiring, the PICO number is 855-741-9011. And the information I have, I'll put it in the council's packet. I have photos and all from the meter fire that we had. One good thing about the fire that we did have is that the meter was mounted on a brick wall so that it was...there was not a chance that it was going to spread into the house because of the masonry wall.
Anybody else have any questions for Herbie on any other issues?
Hi, Mr. President. Herbie, how long have you been the chief?
Chief?
For your position here, yes.
The borough or my fire?
No, for us.
Since 2005.
Since 2005? And usually, you just stay there till we say you're no longer needed, right? If we wanted to replace you?
The...right. The ordinance says that the fire chiefs serve at the pleasure of council.
Pleasure of council, okay. And how's everything going with all the firehouses? Do you feel like everybody's getting along finally, or are we still having issues?
Well, there always will be issues.
There's always going to be issues, I know.
On a minor level. I'm not aware...
The reason I bring it up is because I'm always getting issues in my ear, but I'm asking you.
Oh, I'm not aware that there's any significant issues right now.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything for Herbie? Herbie, just to let you know, in council, I received a letter from Lieutenant Governor James Colley in regards to the Dow Chemical Fire, and says, "Thank you for contacting my office with concerns regarding the response and management of the recent Dow Chemical Plant Fire. I have contacted both fire commissions and to ask them to review your letter and discuss this incident. I am happy to report both agencies were already reviewing this incident internally. The fire commissions would welcome your department's insight pertaining to the efforts in response to this incident. If there are any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me at this number in the future. If you have any suggestions or questions for permit or the fire commission, commissioner's office, please be sure to include me as well." So just wanted you to know. I'll make a copy of this for council. I just received it. So if anybody wants to see this...so he did respond, and this is where we're at with that. Can you write out to council once we make some copies? So anybody have anything else for the fire chief? Herbie, the other thing, just I was at the fire board meeting. I thought the mayor was going to be there. He let me down.
I got sick that night.
That's okay.
Couldn't call anybody.
But anyway, we worked out the gas station there. We offered them the use of the public works facility, and everything will be handled through the finance department and Mr. Dillon. They'll have codes to use to get into the gate, codes to use for the gas station, and we limited it to just two drivers per company that can use it. We're not issuing 10 to 15 cars for every fireman down there. So they have the option. If they want to use it, they can. If they don't want to use it, they can continue buying gas wherever they want. Arnie?
Today was the first day of school at St. Mark, and I understand everything went smooth today. Tomorrow's the first day for the public schools, and we'll also have officers and fire police to assist with the traffic flow as we have the last couple of years. I'd like to remind the parents, please obey the rules of the road when you're on the...in the vehicle, and also when you cross your kids at the street. Set a good example for them. Make sure you cross where the crossing guards are. We're gearing up for this Saturday, the Mill Street Run and Italian Day. We'll also have officers at both of those events and fire police. Today and tomorrow, we have six officers, six more officers in mandatory training up in Doylestown, and that'll leave just a few officers left that needed a training for this year. And last week, our speed display board that we've had since 2003 got whacked in an accident. We're assessing the damage now, and we're going to see if it needs to be replaced or repaired, and we're going to do that as quickly as we can.
Just so you know, if it needs to be replaced for some reason, the ones they have down in Long Beach Island, they're in a small bucket. They come up, they're LED, and they say, "Slow down, you're exceeding your speed," and they're very small and very noticeable. Anybody can get run in the back of a car. So it's something that I know the big one, you don't want people to rob it, but you always can chain this to a telephone pole or something like that. So before you purchase one, you know, take a look at what's out there, and if there's no power needed, I think they're solar.
Yes.
So it's really not...I'm sure they're all over, but I notice it every time I go down it, because I go faster than I'm supposed to.
How long was the one we had?
We got it on a grant in 2003.
Anybody have any questions? Greg for the chief?
Yes, a few things. First, in Harriman, and I don't know if it's something that's been happening around town, and I know you're well aware of it, I just wanted to see if I could get an update on it. There have been a series of car break-ins, some of them around the Coolidge area, others, I know, on Pond Street. I'm wondering if we have made any progress on this. I understand that we think it might be the same person. I just want to see if we had made any progress on that.
We don't know if it's the same person or not. We've expended a lot of time, bike patrols, unmarked vehicles, 3:00, 4:00 in the morning, 10:00 at night. But right now, no, that person...I'm really surprised that we didn't get a good identification on that picture that we put up last month, but we're still working on that.
Okay. And then I recently got more than one email, and I got to tell you, we do this, and, you know, the different issues certainly pile up, and then sometimes you lose sight of one yourself. And when I got these emails, it kind of rang true for me because of where I live, and I see it every single day. And I know it's a problem all around town, so I don't want to think I'm discounting it and saying it's just a problem in the east ward. But Wilson Avenue, which is loaded with stop signs, I mean, there's a stop sign, I think, on every other corner. Apparently, even stop signs are not deterrents for people to simply just speed at, I mean, excessive rates. I also think our police do a great job, but a question that I've been getting routinely, and I don't think that it's unequitable, I think they're spending lots of time around town, and it's just a matter...it may be a matter of manpower, maybe we want to discuss, but a lot of people are concerned that there has not been enough patrols in the Harriman area, you know, whether it be at 2:00 in the morning or whether it be at 1:30 in the afternoon. People are just flying down Wilson Avenue. So I'm just asking or hoping, or maybe even asking your opinion about whether you think that's a manpower thing.
I can tell you the patrols are out there, but perhaps we could beef up special details.
Okay.
We utilize the part-timers and the full-timers, but the part-timers own special details, especially with traffic-related, so I will see that we take care of that.
Okay. I appreciate that. And then I have one last one. It probably pertains to the details as well, and that is to say that it's been a problem coming out onto Farragut Avenue. We've discussed this before, but I also understand that coming out of Taylor Street onto Rackliff Street, if you are turning left, you're certainly taking a gamble there. And I guess the problem for some people that are leaving that area to go to work or whatever else it might be, if they turn right, there's no convenient kind of going-around-the-block thing that a lot of us can do because of the way Rackliff Street is set up, if you have to go all the way down to Jefferson Avenue before you can make that turnaround. I don't know if we can, you know, observe that for a little while and see whether it's where the cars are parked, or if we can check that out, too. That'd be great.
Is that it?
Yes.
Tony?
I have actually two things.
What did I say? I said one, and I had three?
No, you said two, and you had three. All right, here we go. Chief, there was an incident over at the baseball fields. There were IV drug needles. I guess there's IV drug users using our kids' dugouts as a shoot-up den. So I know there was pictures. Are we able to make a declaration that that camera is fixed to deter these people from using our kids' dugouts as shoot-up dens? Do we get that camera taken care of?
Yeah, there were some issues with that camera. That has since been resolved.
Okay.
And we have some issues with some other cameras right now.
Okay, but we're up and running at...
Hi.
Jefferson Avenue? No.
No?
Let me just say, it's intermittent. It's on, it's off. We have some issues with that, but right now, I'd have to check with Matt. That area's covered pretty well, and we get some pretty good video from that area, especially on the dugouts.
Okay. So I mean, I think that's something that we really got to get up and going, because the picture that somebody sent me was super disturbing.
Yeah, I...
Did you see it?
Yes.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure, because there are a bunch of kids, number one, that play over in that little totlot, that playground, and it's not a far-fetched one, then they jump over that fence or just walk around, go into those dugouts, act like they're playing baseball, and then run into those needles. And kids are curious, you know, I don't think...you know, I know the kids I grew up with, they're not going to run out of there, away from it, and go tell mommy and daddy, they're going to start messing with it. You know, I just want to avoid somebody accidentally stabbing themselves, jabbing themselves with a, you know, with a dirty needle, or any needle. The second thing I have is also at the totlot area. I know that there's an age requirement for those totlots. What do we do to manage older kids going in there and taking over the, you know, the playgrounds and make it their hangout instead of, you know, letting little kids who can use it go over there and...
I know the officers on patrol have, in the past, shooed away those kids that are over, I believe it's over 12.
Yeah, I think it's 12 was the number, yeah.
And also, any neighbors, any older kids in there, they can certainly call.
Okay.
And we'll respond.
All right, that's what I was looking for, something like that. All right, that's it. Thanks, chief.
Yes, Arnie, not that I need to know, not that I have the right to know, but I was just curious. The cameras that we have in town, have they been effective this year?
Yes, they have.
Okay.
In several locations.
Patty?
Heather, we're on the subject of the cameras. Have the cameras been available to, like, businesses yet? Or is there any way that businesses...
That plan seemed to be on the back burner.
Okay. Do we have any idea if we're going to make it something accessible to them?
I'm not aware of any at this time.
Okay. Because then we need to have some more patrol behind Josefine Salon on Pond Street. There's always seems to be an issue between the skating rink there and I would think it's Washington Street, that part of the back of the trail with kids hanging out there, destroying her property, damaging her property. I mean, she worked really hard to keep that place nice, and it's a shame that, you know, she really would love to have a camera back there. I mean, she'd love to buy one herself, but, you know, she had heard about it before and wasn't sure if we were going to do that. So if we can just beef it up a little bit. And maybe, like, it's that time of year, the weather's changing, and the kids are looking for something to do. Maybe if the officers in the evenings could actually ride by the totlots, but get out of the car, walk up to the totlots. I mean, the kids do hide in the sliding boards and stuff, and just try to let them know that they're going to keep checking to make sure they're not hanging out there, the older kids that shouldn't be there anyway. And how long is our bike patrol going to be out?
I think we're out until December last year.
December?
That's when we were last year.
Okay.
And we started pretty early, too, so...
Okay.
The guys like that patrol. They enjoy it, and they do a good job on it, so as long as we can bundle up and be effective, we'll be out there.
Okay. All right, and that's it. I just...I really think it'd be effective if they got out of the car every once in a while and walked through the lights and checked things out. Thank you.
Okay. Since we're on the camera, I know it's very hard for you to answer questions because you don't want the people that are committing the crime to know what you're doing. So I'm sure you're...I'm aware, I'm not aware, but I'm sure you're on top of all these cameras and the issues with Mr. Devine and Mr. Pezzet and what Mrs. Rodriguez had. But I just want to throw something out to council while we're talking about cameras. We're in a process right now of installing cameras at another location to put Mill Run under surveillance. There are surveillance things that are going on there now, but full surveillance. And it's very possible that there's a link that we may be able to turn that camera on so everybody in town can view it. I don't know how you feel about that, but I think, let's see what happens if we can get this done, and the manager's working very hard to get it done. Anybody at any time of day can turn their TV on and view these cameras at Mill Run, which it'll do is call...they see something, they can call the police, but it's just another set of eyes, a lot of eyes. And if it works as a trial period, maybe we turn other areas on. Maybe some of these totlots get turned on to where people can view them, which will be, you know, somebody that can help the police force. There are cameras around town that none of us know about where they are, and that's the police and the mayor's job to install them in areas that they feel that they need. But some of these public cameras that you see at the viewing, some of the public areas, that you see at the viewing, some of the public areas, maybe there'll be a screen on our TV that'll show six or eight cameras. And there's people that are up all night, and there's people that get up early in the morning and want to turn that channel on and play cop, and if they see something, call the police and say, there's kids in the dugout, or there's kids here. But I don't know, I don't know how you feel about this, but if you want to experiment, we could experiment first with Mill Run, since it's not, it's an area that, it's an empty building. We'll be surveilling the whole entire property. And if it works, and it's not too much of a nuisance, I mean, we don't want people calling every five minutes, oh, there's a, somebody kid walking through the parking lot. But what's that, Pat?
One quick question on that. It's an interesting idea, and I don't want to play devil's advocate here, but Billy, maybe you could jump in here. Is that constitutionally right to do that?
You know, this is the first I've heard about it. I think we have to see where the cameras are. If they're in an area that's not open to the public, I think it's probably okay.
Okay.
If it's an area that is open to the public, I think there might be some concerns. So, but let's talk about it.
It's an interesting idea.
Yeah.
Mr. Devine?
I guess I kind of feel like Pat does. I like the idea, you know, the premise of the idea, but the reality of it, it's kind of scary, and to think of, you know, I don't want to become like a police state, you know what I mean? Like, I'm not really even worrying about too much of, you know, being a headache for police, or things like that, which it could turn into. But, you know, I would just be afraid that, it's like, you know, looking to the future, you know, we're looking at everything that everyone's doing all the time. It's just, I think it's a little too much, to be honest with you. That's how my gut feeling is right now. So I'll wait till I hear from, you know, some of the people in my ward, and let me see how they feel. But that's my own opinion of how I feel about it right now.
I just think that if you have cameras on your, on our property, it's borough property that we own, and I don't know what the legal, and I didn't discuss this with the solicitor, if somebody's defacing our property, we have a right to monitor our property, and if they're unhappy, then they don't come on our property.
And as far as Mill Run goes, I think it's a no-brainer. You know, Mill Run is a vacant, empty?
Well, that's what I said, I like, if it, and we don't even know what it would cost, we don't know if it's even possible, we think it is, and before we did go live, council would make that decision.
Yeah.
And I would give everybody all the details on how much it's gonna cost, what's involved, before we do that, and that would be everybody's decision. But it's an empty building, and I think we need to protect it.
I agree.
And I think there's other areas in town that, you know, if this works, maybe six months from now, we want to relook at this, and like Pat said, you know, let's make sure we can do it first, it's not unconstitutional.
Yeah, I think those are definitely bad questions.
I don't know. But the cops can't be in every place 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So if somebody's defacing the train station, or one of the tot lots, or, you know, graffitiing something in town, and we have a camera on that building, who knows? I mean, they've been very successful, I think, since we put them in. They led to many arrests that they don't even tell us about.
Now, with Mill Run, it's not just someone that might be in there to rob a shield, it might be a 10-year-old kid that is being stupid and could hurt themselves, too. So I think with, if it could work in Mill Run, I think Mill Run is a great place to?
To experiment with it. But before we do anything, like I says, everybody will be aware of it, and we'll make a decision together. Anybody else have anything for the chief? Bobby?
My main concern on that would be, this link would just be for the cameras that we designate.
Just for Mill Run?
Right.
Now, if we could do Mill Run as an experiment?
The link, they wouldn't be able to hook up to the cameras that we have out there for surveillance work.
No, 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 not at all. And then if, what I said is, if we even do Mill Run, which I think is a good idea, if down the road, Tony says, or Pat, or Betty, or Greg, I'm having a real problem in this area, and the cops are doing everything they can to try to catch these people, but it doesn't work. Maybe it's a public area, and we plug one in and let the people monitor it. But also, even though that camera's there and there's something being done, they have the availability to review the tapes.
Right.
I mean, you know that.
Right.
To see who also was involved. So it's not that we can't review something to try to catch them also. I just thought that maybe the people in town may find it interesting. So again, it's only something I'm throwing out here, we'll get more information next month and discuss it. And if you want to move forward, if we can move forward, then we'll experiment with Mill Run. Greg, what do you have?
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Uh, chief, I gave you some information about the break-ins. How did that pan out with the pictures that I?
Um, not?
Not good at all?
I'll discuss with you.
Okay.
All right, Greg, what do you have?
Uh, just a few questions.
Very nice.
I won't say exactly how many here. One of them is pertaining to, I think this is a question for the borough manager, and that is, there's a paper street on Taylor Street in between, I guess it's Pond and Wood, you know what I'm talking about? It's right next to the blue house that was just recently purchased on the right-hand side. You know what I'm talking about?
No, not at all.
It looks like an alley, like, if you're coming down Taylor Street, it looks like a grass alley. It actually runs all the way down behind the houses that are on Pond Street.
Right.
So it's like the, it's the second house in from Pond Street on the right, there is a paper street that runs down it. And I had a few questions from some of the people that live in that area, as to if we own that or not. And if we do, do we maintain it? And if we don't, who owns it, so that we can kind of identify who does maintain it? I think if you might, I know what I'm talking about. It looks actually like it could be a driveway, too, because some of the people in that neighborhood park there, but it runs straight all the way back.
It runs into the fifth Ward property, right?
Yeah, yes. It's like right, yeah, the fifth Ward is right there, too. So I don't know if anyone owns that paper street, if we do, or, you know, it's just something we'll get to find out.
Okay.
Because the person that lives on it says they've been maintaining it, and they just wanted to know. Okay, then I have another issue that I think a lot of people are excited and concerned about, and that is an update on some of the things that are happening at the Borough Pub. First of all, the Borough Pub's been open for a few weeks now, and I think by most people's account, that have been there, it's been going very well. It's a beautiful place, if you've yet to be there. But I had a few questions, and I did address them with the people of the Borough Pub, with the owners of the Borough Pub. One certainly pertaining to parking, and I did request the information of how to get in touch with Simon and Schuster, who obviously own the huge building behind them. And they have reached out to Simon and Schuster, they're hopefully in the works of getting something done, they're not sure, but they are trying to expand the parking behind the building so that it's not a problem for the people that live in that area. They also asked me to make it clear that they are not telling their people to park on Coolidge Street, which is something that people were concerned with as well. But they are aware that parking is an issue. They thought maybe they remedied it, but it has obviously been maybe even more popular than they had expected. So they are trying to be good neighbors, and they are working out some plans as to what they can do there. And then the last one I have is a little bit of a more serious note. Looking at our, you know, discussion or informational items, I read George Waldron's monthly report, very thorough, very well done, and, you know, I kind of appreciate that feedback. And then that kind of also raised my air a little bit about the inspection report. And it says on there, it will be forwarded, which I certainly trust that it will. And my question is not with the fact that it will be forwarded, and my question and my issue is certainly not with John as well, because I think John Miller is who I'm talking about, is a professional, and he does his job. But my question is with where we are right now with BIU. For those people that don't know, we hire some people to do our inspections. And quite frankly, at this point in time, the reports that I'm getting back are always that John Miller's a very professional guy. And I'm not gonna say that any one person in particular is doing something wrong or bad, but my concern is, if we hire someone to be the face of Bristol Borough, yes, as an inspector, you have to be a stickler, you have to be tough, you can't get pushed around, and, you know, you gotta check off the boxes and go through the steps. I understand that. But the multitude of reports that I'm getting back about the way we, Borough Council, we, Bristol Borough, are being represented by not the inspections themselves, but just the way in which, the way in which we are coming across as a borough based on these inspections, I don't think it's good for not only homeowners, I don't think it's good for new businesses coming into town. We are getting a bit of a reputation, and it's not from us, and it's not from our people, but we're getting a bit of a reputation of a place that is not friendly to people that want to come in and do work, whether it be construction work, whether it be commercial work. And I just, you know, I think it might be something that we want to look at and evaluate, as to where we are currently with our contract, or our, I don't know if it's a year-to-year contract, I don't know the exact state of that, but I have concerns with our relationship currently with BIU.
Well, the option is, and a lot of that I agree with, and I'm in the field, and I deal with it every day, it's to interview other firms that are out there. I don't know how, I think there's not many, there might be only one or two, right, that may be out there that can do these inspections. See what happened with the inspection department when the state went to this unified building code, and they gave all the inspectors that were in all these boroughs and townships five years to get their license, because a lot of these old timers knew more than, way more than some of these young kids that are inspectors now, but they never went to school to get the documentation that they needed. So the state gave them five years. Most of them didn't, they weren't gonna go to school, they were in their late 50s, early 60s, some guys, late 60s. So they, all them inspectors that were around for years and dealt with people and had a great relationship are no longer with us.
Right.
Then the state turned around, and when you did commercial work, you used to go through L and I. So that meant, every time you did a commercial project, the state, state L and I, you had to run your blueprints up to Harrisburg, and they would review them and redline them and send them back, and you would go through that process with your architect. They did away with that now. So now you have to deal with agencies that can handle this. To hire an in-house inspector today, you would need one for plumbing, you would need one for electric, you would need one for HVAC, unless he's licensed in all these different fields. But electrical inspectors have to come under an underwriting system. So the borough, we can afford to put all these people on a payroll. So that's why now these agencies have taken over. There's, like I said, maybe one or two other agencies out there. And I agree, when people come in here and they want to put a deck on their house, or they want to do something minor, it's like they're shell-shocked anymore. They need blueprints, they need, but a lot of that is state mandate. It's like a teacher, you're a teacher, and so is Tony. The state mandates what you guys should do, but nobody wants to pay for them mandating this. So they mandate, well, you gotta do, follow all these rules, you need an architect, there, nobody, everybody gets sued today. So nobody wants the liability of signing off like years ago.
Sure, and I, you know, I understand that, and I'm not asking them to?
No, neither am I, but I agree with you, when a homeowner comes in, there's ways to deal with people.
Right.
Because they are the people that represent us.
Right.
And I agree with you, I don't feel that a lot of the personalities that are representing us are doing the right thing.
I think we need a, how can I help you attitude. And that doesn't mean that it's do the wrong thing and we're okay with it.
Nobody's asking for that.
Yeah, right, I know. And I just think we need to be?
My recommendation would be, let's have the manager contact BIU, back one or two others, see who else is out there, set up a couple meetings, I'll form a committee with one or two people, and I'm sure you want to be on it.
I would like to be on it.
And maybe Pat, since he's in the construction field also, would like to, we'll meet with them, and by October, November, we'll make a recommendation. Either we're gonna stay with them, and they're gonna change their way of dealing with people, or we're gonna move in a different direction. I have no problem with that.
Okay.
And we have no ties, no contracts, am I correct? They serve at the pleasure of council. Right?
Right.
And maybe by the time you meet with them, maybe you can find out what exactly the complaints are. Because if it's something that has to do with the state and the recommendations and nothing we can control, then it's really?
I mean, I do know what the complaints are.
Yeah, so then maybe you can address those particular things with whoever it is that, because I've heard stuff before, but?
Right.
You know, I think it would be good if you could meet with those people.
Sure. And I have no issue with an inspector that says, look, here's the regulations.
Right, right.
And I get that, but I have an issue when someone comes into town, and it's confusing.
Yeah, it is.
And they know, they know the stuff like in the back of their hand, and instead of saying, here's what you have to do, here's how I can help you, here's, you know, the next step in the process, you did it wrong.
Right, because we want to welcome people here, we don't want to push them away.
I don't like that attitude.
Yeah, absolutely.
We have sheets that explain, you know, this is the process, this is what you have to do, if you need to go in front of the zone, here's the process. So we do have sheets to help people. But I think what Greg's saying is, on a hands-on, when the inspectors come out, they need to have a better attitude with dealing with people.
Yeah, I agree totally with Greg. I just think he's right, and I think since he's hearing most of these complaints, it's good for him to sit there and, you know, maybe these people need to chill out a little bit, I mean.
Right, I agree.
Thank you.
That's it? You're done?
Yes.
Tony, what do you have for us?
A few things. I talked to the animal control officer, Mr. Palmer, and basically kind of just a note for everyone in town with the cat situation, is that people are concerned if they have their own cats, are they going to be picked up, you know, by these traps and then taken spayed and neutered or whatever. He said, the best way to do is inform the residents of the town that have cats, and make sure they have collar on them. If they have a collar on, they will not be touched. So this is for everyone out there that has a cat, and they don't want to be picked up by mistake, collar on it, so that way when they see it's trapped with a collar, they'll let it go. That's the easiest way to do it. The second thing is, the Amtrak fence on Garden Street looks horrible. Half the trees planted are dead, the landscaping they did is terrible. I mean, they didn't even, they cut out all the grass to plant that little weed grass in the trees, but they didn't put any weed blocker on the bottom. So now everything's coming, it looks even worse than it did before. They're better off knocking, you know, knocking everything out of there. What is, what's the process? Can we write them a letter to tell them, look, if you're gonna do, it looked better before you did anything. Better off just letting the jungle grow out of here, instead of sticking, now you've got all the trees and everything in the front that's pushing, that's pushing out. So it looks worse than it did before they tried to beautify the place. So I don't know, Mr. Dunlop, there's some, you know, we can write a letter to them, level notes, and look, just come and get everything out of here. Half the trees are dead.
Well, suppose I take pictures, I'll send them the ones that are dead, ask them to replant those?
See, the biggest problem is, and I had a guy do this for me, too, is he, they dug out all the grass, and the dirt, they didn't put any weed blocker down underneath. So now, all the grass and the weeds are coming out, and they're higher than the trees.
The one area up towards Jefferson Avenue, that area looks nice, so I don't know what happened there. Well, you know, I noticed the other, over the weekend, and I drove by.
Yeah, the homeowner taking care of the problem.
Yeah, some of the people do take care of it, but, all right, we'll take a look and send a letter to Amtrak.
Okay, appreciate it. Actually, while I got you talking, the second one is, how is George Waldron making up that motor? Did you hear anything about the motor at the plant?
George is on vacation, he came back today, I'll check tomorrow. I know we ordered it, we ordered a new one.
Okay.
Remember, we ordered that about 10 days ago, so.
So we ordered, that's good.
Hopefully it'll be in this week.
Um, the other thing I want to do, I want to make an announcement, an announcement to all the people in the borough, especially in the north ward along the avenues where people put their trash out back in the alleys, to make sure you're putting your trash out on the designated trash dais, because they're leaving their trash out, and it just gets all over the place. So, I mean, that's, it's just like a courtesy thing. I mean, I hate to see that you have to go and get the inspector and do all this. It's simple. Trash is on, for us, it's Mondays and Thursdays, after 5:00, put your trash out, when it's done, take your trash cans or whatever back in. And then the last thing I have is, oh, and the mosquitoes, they're said, in our packet, we're getting sprayed for the mosquitoes, the adult mosquitoes, I think it's tomorrow.
Right, Thursday night?
They said the 6th, the 5th, right? So, but they said there was gonna be a map attached to it, where they're gonna be spraying, I didn't see that in our packet. I don't know if anyone else?
Yeah.
Do you got a map in you?
If it wasn't in the packet, it was in it. An email, I saw something.
The email, we had, we had the map.
Oh, there's an email?
That map was sent out to everybody, as I remember.
Yes.
Plus, we made a hard copy and put it in your packet.
Yeah, that's all right, I'll just check the email, I didn't, I didn't look at the email, I'll check the email for it. Now, is there anything that we need to tell the residents about, you know, after spraying? Because I don't even do that much, do they have to worry about being outside? Everything's... And then, uh, the last thing I want to do is, I would like to put the, make the following resolution to put on, uh, the agenda for Monday's meeting. I would like the chairs of all the boards and commissions to be required to inform council of any vacancies when they happen, just so we're all on the same page and we're all, you know, we all have the, the same amount of time to, to get qualified people to, to perform on those boards and commissions. And that's it.
Hey, Mr. Sabatini.
Yes, Mr. President, I, I agree more or less with Councilman Pezza about BIU. Uh, there seems to be a change in their attitude, kind of like an arrogance. And they're in the service business and they have intimidated a lot of people. And I don't think it's fair, so I would be very much, uh, I'd be very happy to see what other companies are out there, so we can make a, a decision on if we stay with them or if we want to look down the road. Um, getting back to trash cans, uh, on the avenues, the calls just keep coming, all the people leaving them on the wrong time. But that's something we could take care of, I think. One question, on the Fourth Avenue alley between Third and Fourth, um, I have a few residents that live at the end closest to Beaver Street, want to know, does that alley continue or does that alley stop at the, um... I guess it would be, um, there's a gate there and then maybe an eight-foot wide, um, concrete walk or concrete driveway to Beaver Street, but it's gated. And there's some concerns there if there's ever a fire, that a fire truck couldn't get back there. So we can look into...
Where's the sap at?
Uh, between Fourth and Third Ave.
Is that the one that butts up to that building?
Yeah. We don't know if that's part of that building or if that's still a paper street.
Gotcha.
And if it's a paper street, you know, hill, Herbie will tell you, you know, accessibility to a fire is key. And that's an area where you could not get a fire truck back there.
You said it's gated?
It's gated the one side, but I'm saying if you were to came, come off of, uh, Fourth Avenue and try to get in through the back, you'd have a hard time. I was wondering if there was an entrance to get all, get on there from Beaver Street, or is that owned by somebody? Okay.
They have maps and, uh, take a ride maybe, chief, you know, take a ride.
Okay, that's it.
Betty?
Oh.
I'm sorry.
One other thing, um, curbs, how many curbs did we do this year?
None at the moment.
Oh, we didn't? Do we have any plan to do this year?
Hopefully we'll have a proposal to council for October. George is, uh, getting quotes and we're trying to, uh, get a, you know, spend that $25,000 that council has allotted each year to do a certain, uh, number of handicap curbs in the town each year.
Okay, um, one of the...
We're trying to do, one of the things that I, I think we have a problem with, or not a problem, but we want to protect the asset, is the roads, the roads that we've done need to be tarred, you know, at the curb line and any cracks, we want to seal them. And that, that's going to be our major effort, uh, in, uh, the end of September, October. So I think these handicap curbs, uh, maybe some of that work, we're going to try and get some, uh, quotes from outside contractors and try and get some of that work done.
You don't think we can do it?
But I think some of the roads that we've already even tarred in the last two years, we're starting to get the vegetation coming back through, so we're going to have to go back and re-tar many of those streets. So to maintain the, you know, the paving and all, uh, that's something critical. So that's going to be our, uh, one of our main goals for the rest of the year.
Um, getting back to, uh, the curbs, are we going to do it in-house or are we going to do it out-ha? Are we going to, uh...
Getting quotes and do it out, out, uh, by outside contractors at the moment. Our guys are capable, but it is very time-consuming and, uh, there is a lot of other work that I think we have to address.
Okay, because we are, we have a curb, a curb problem, um, existing now in the North Ward. Tony and I had to go meet with an individual, and I'm not going to mention his name, but he actually went to court and I'm not going to say that, you know, he's blaming this guy, this guy's blaming this guy, one thing after another, but it is a curb that was supposed to have been done, it hasn't been done yet. And I was wondering if it would be possible to get it done this year. So in October, when we go through that, maybe we could put that in as one of the first...
All right, if you have an issue with somebody that needs to be done, then we got to get it done.
Yeah, okay, okay.
We just, you know, we did a lot of curbs in Harriman last year.
I think you guys did a great job.
You guys got something in your ward that's, especially if somebody's disabled or...
We've got a small issue...
Talk to Jim after the meeting and...
We've got a small issue that could be easily solved.
But I'm saying, if you have something, or Betty, or whoever, that's very important that this curb gets done, then we're going to get it done.
Yeah, and I, I, I don't think it would take, uh, George and the crew a long time. They seem to have gotten it down to a science, their curbs are better than the curbs you're seeing in Philadelphia being put in.
That helped us out last year, showing them how to do them, so...
Yeah, my father was influential in the beginning stages of showing George and Kevin, who's knows concrete pretty well, and Dave Barapoe, but, um, the guys are really good at it, I got to say that, we got a very good borough crew.
Now, if we have $25,000 allotted for those, for each year to get those curbs done, don't we want to get this done sooner or later because I don't, I mean, you would...
Well, we don't lose the money, it's our money.
So, I mean, but...
If we couldn't get to it, then we would have $50,000 next year.
All right.
No, we don't touch that money.
Got you, yeah, yeah.
But sometimes you rip out a curb, it can be as matter as a day's work, and some days it can be four days' work because you got to take so many feet of sidewalk out to make the ramp right and... Yet that the engineer, you know, approved the design because somebody falls and it hasn't been approved, then we get sued. Right, if the slope's not right and... It's unbelievable, the technical...
Right, I'm sure. Okay, so it sounds like...
Curbs are the most difficult things, that's why there's curb guys that do curbs and there's guys that do floor, uh, floor, uh, concrete.
You know who the curb guy? One summer I was a curb guy, down the city, curb.
I bet you, I bet you loved that.
Well, I did like it. But the $25,000, so it sounds like it would be better for us if it comes down to it to wait the next year instead of, to, we can do it cheaper, we can get more done if we wait.
Nah, right now we have Mr. Dillon contacting, I don't want to use their name, some local guys that have their own backhoe that live in town, that maybe they'll rip them out and then our guys will form them for them. So we're working on all different options.
And you know what, Mr. De Giuseppe, um, that sometimes could be better than our own crew because they have to get X amount of curbs done in order to make X amount of money.
So what we're doing is if we could pay so much to have them, say we go to one intersection, there's eight curbs per intersections.
It's crazy.
So they, they tear them all out and we go behind and form them for them. So there's, the manager's looking into all different options to get the most out of, how many curbs, just $25,000. Betty, what do you have, dear?
Um, just everybody got in their packet, the letters from the Latino Alliance and the Interface Housing. Please just respond to them, um, they've called me, um, asking if everybody would just respond if they're going to attend either event or if they'd like to contribute anything. Talking about dead trees, Linden Street, the, the old Pico plant that they... Then they put the fence that people didn't like and then they put these trees. I'm not a tree expert, they're all dead, they're all dead. They look like little pine trees, they look like, I don't, um, anyway, they're dead. If we can get Pico to just take those trees out and maybe meet with some of us to ask us what type of trees we would like there since they planted them, um, maybe something that would be a little nicer for the neighbors to look at. I really would like this done like yesterday, because these trees have been dead for a while. Um, I asked my husband, are they supposed to come back to life or something? But they're, they're, they're dead, they're yellow, they weren't green. So please, if somebody can get in touch with Pico right away and get back to me on that. Um, graffiti on Otter Street, first of all, that place down Otter Street looks great, the sidewalk's done. Um, we used to have all those trees coming out all crazy, the guy pulled all the trees and now he did all the sidewalk, but now there's graffiti all over the fence. I, I don't think the graffiti was there before, I think, and we didn't see it, I think it's just recently. So if somebody can take care of the graffiti, um, by getting in touch with the group, that takes care of that. And when is the doo-wop? People are asking the date of the doo-wop.
15th.
Okay. Okay, I'm getting phone calls.
The 15th, it's not this weekend, it's next weekend.
Okay.
At, uh, 6:00 to 10:00 o'clock.
Thank you.
Betty, while, while, uh, you were on, two things that just kind of reminded me, um, Josefina's place, I don't know if you saw it or she knows, and with the graffiti that you just mentioned. I was just running down the path the other day and on her wall is...
She's got graffiti too?
She knows.
Okay.
She's not happy. It's been removed.
Okay, I was like...
I think we had it removed in the last...
Did we? I, I, I'm, I'm sorry, maybe it was...
No, no, no.
I, I, and this is one of the problems, that's why she wants a camera, because they're just, they're really, really...
They're anyway... She cuts my hair, I hear.
Yeah, okay, I just broke my hair too, um, you know, but I mean, they, they, they broke her air conditioning on the back, the kids...
It's a shame what they've done, and, and the chief's aware of it, believe me, you know...
Yeah, and I just feel bad and, and I mean, she's ready to go buy a camera and probably hook it up to her house so she could see who's doing what, but I mean...
I'm willing to put more lights back there, could George...
We just need, we need more lights and we need patrol, we need these, we need our police officers that are very good police officers to just really get back there and tell these kids they cannot hang out there. It's just terrible.
Get the mobile.
Somebody who worked so hard to build what she's built and she has to keep fixing, it's not fair. And I'm sure it happens to other businesses in Bristol, I'm not just, you know, but she is in my ward and I am taking care of what I need to take care of, but that's it. Thank you.
Okay, I just got a few things I want to run by you. One, the quotes are going to be coming in tomorrow for the ballfield improvements. I think they're due noon tomorrow, so if anybody wants to stop in, you're welcome. Uh, the mosquito spraying will take place tomorrow, Thursday, September 6th, between 7:45 PM and 10:30 PM. They will be spraying the, the town for that, the do...
We want one hour out of our bikes behind it, right?
We used to...
The doo-wop concert, uh, the committee has informed us that everything's going good. There's three groups this year. The first group is Gary Tosti and it's a shame Sonny passed away. And then I think they have the Tramps and, uh, the other group. Tokens, see, Arnie knows, he's an Aldi's guy. So hopefully everybody could come out and support that event. Uh, I want to get on the agenda to authorize the advertisement of change to the police pension ordinance to comply with the current collect, collective bargaining agreement in the state law. The manager met today with the state and there are some things that have to be changed, uh, were required by law to do, so on the agenda. I talked to council prior to, uh, this evening in executive session, we discussed some personnel and some, uh, a few other things to put on the agenda, an agreement with the Amish market for a lease with our property. And the solicitor's going to, uh, discuss that and have it on in our packets for next week. I want to get the, probably the end of September, beginning of October, I'd like to form a committee and start the union negotiations contract with, with our local supervisors and our public works department. Uh, contract is up at the end of the year, so I'd like to start negotiations with them, hopefully the end of September, beginning of October, and hopefully we can get this resolved so we can do our budget in November. Our October council meeting, I pulled council tonight, everybody knows we're going to be meeting Wednesday instead of Monday, which is Columbus Day for October, so that'll be Wednesday, the 10th at 7:00 PM.
Mr. President, is that the work session or the regular?
Work session.
Work session.
No, it's a regular meeting.
Right, October 1st is the regular meeting.
October 1st is the work session.
October 1st is the work session, October 10th will be the regular meeting. Mayor, what do you have, anything?
I have nothing.
Uh, Ralph, I'm sorry, there's one thing I forgot to say and, and Robin and I discussed it. Robin and I are on that committee for the redevelopment authority that is identifying, uh, commercial properties that they may be able to or think about, you know, make, taking some action on. So, um, I think we were going to do it tonight, I guess we'll wait until next week when Robin is here. Um, next meeting, I'm sorry, when Robin is here, yeah, next, next week. Um, so that we can just kind of tell you some of the things we were thinking about. The meeting's at the end of September, uh, so we would like to talk to council about some of the ideas that we had there.
Sure.
Mr. President, I did forget one thing, a question, um, for Mr. Dillon. The, um, prop with the Garden Street fence, with their saying one thing and then saying another. Did we have any luck with any conversations with them?
No, their position is, it's their property and they're going to put the fence up. They originally came into town and called us as Homeland Security and that's why they couldn't give us that type of fence that we were, you know, Ralph and everybody else was pushing for, that was up in Harriman. They said, "No, we can only give you what's Homeland Security, uh, has authorized." And eventually, uh, they admitted that this was not, had nothing to do with Homeland Security and they just proceeded with, put the fence up. I think they had every intention of putting that fence up from the very beginning, you know. And they'll probably never come back in town and do the other side or anywhere else.
So basically, what I'm reading on this, what, that the people in Garden Street and the people in the North Ward are stuck with this thing. Pretty bad feeling.
It's horrible, we agree. I mean, I don't know if they'll come in for another meeting again and you and Tony can talk to them, hopefully, I don't know. I agree with you, it's probably one of the worst things that came into town since we've been here.
It's as bad as, it's as bad as somebody's rental properties, you know what I mean? It just gives that, that street such a...
Bad appearance.
Bad appearance, it's, and, you know, you work, we're working so hard to get a, a better appearance and what you see there are well-kept homes on the left and a jungle on the right.
Yeah.
And it's really not fair, because we don't know what the heck kind of insect or animal could be growing in that or living in that area, so, I, I guess we're going to just have to keep staying on it with our state and, um, other officials.
You want me to... Give me my allegations.
Dad?
Give me your copy here. Sorry. Uh, on the council's agenda for Monday would be the adopted subdivision and land development ordinance that we had the public hearing on, it's been advertised. Uh, also in your packets have been the two resolutions dealing with the 2013 minimum municipal obligations for the police pension fund, as well as the minimum municipal obligation for the non-uniform pension funds. This is put together by our actuary and Angie and, uh, and, uh, you have the copies in your packet. If anyone has any questions, uh, you know, feel free to give me a call or whatever during the week. Uh, the only other things I have is September 29th, on a Saturday, there's going to be some, uh, tree plantings, uh, down at the Bristol Marsh again, uh, sponsored, uh, on behalf of, or by the Heritage Conservancy and the Nature Conservancy, uh, working with the borough. the Heritage Conservancy and the Nature Conservancy, uh, working with the borough. I think over the last number of years, there's been tremendous strides in the, uh, in the upkeep of the marsh and, uh, so that, that activity will be on, uh, Saturday, September 29th, between 9:00 AM and 12:30 PM. The only other thing I just want to mention is tomorrow is the deadline that we have to get their applications to the county for the casino funding, uh, George Waldron helped prepare the one for the sanitary sewer cleaning vehicle, uh, and, uh, as was noted, uh, Chief Slack and Chief Porter, uh, did the work on the, uh, application for the emergency upgrade to the police fire emergency management radios, uh, and, uh, Chief Slack did a fantastic job, uh, working with Maria on this application, so, uh, copies are available if you'd like to, to look at it, we only have a limited number of copies. The third, uh, application is out being printed, uh, and that's for an upgrade to the sanitary sewer pumping station over on Lakeland Avenue, which, uh, controls the sewer for the Venice Ashby area, and that's, like I said, is being printed tonight, because it has to be delivered to the county tomorrow, so it's very tight, uh, timeframe we've been under, so I, you know, want to thank Maria and the chief, and the chief, and, uh, Paul Yezzy and George for spending some of their, uh, off-duty time putting this thing together, and of course, Chief Slack's a volunteer, so, uh, we expect to have the applications hand-delivered tomorrow on time, to meet the deadline, so, just wanted to point that out, thank you. Ellie?
No, I think you covered everything we discussed in executive session.
All right, just, uh, one other thing, uh, I also wanted to mention to council that the end of, there's so much going on right now throughout town, positive things that are happening, and I'd like to know if council would mind, I would like to send a letter to the Bristol Rotary, which is made up of businessmen and, uh, people from all around our area, that I would like to go there either the end of October or sometime in November and speak about the status of the borough, where we were 10 years ago, where we are today, and where we want to be in the next two to five years with projects we have. And I'd like to bring, uh, Councilman Sabatini and Bill Pezza, and let them maybe discuss a little bit about this committee and the tape and how we're promoting the town on that end. I just think it'd be a good day, meet for lunch every week, so I'd like to get on their schedule, like I said, maybe for October, the end of October, sometime in November, if they would let us come in and address all the things that council, you know, has accomplished, and they're business people, maybe they could attract some business in town, but it doesn't hurt, it's just another step in the right direction, if anybody's off that day that they're allowing us to go and you're, you know, I don't know how Rotary works, I think you gotta be invited guests, you just can't go to their meeting, so, Jim, if you, if council doesn't mind, I'd like to authorize Mr. Dillon to send the Rotary, I guess they got a promotion person or somebody you can send a letter to and tell them, I would like to come as the president of council, maybe somebody from the school board and Bill Pezza, uh, to discuss, uh, where we were, where we are now, and where we want to be. Hopefully they accept our invitation. Does anybody have anything else before we adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Look, I, I never ask the public, does anybody have anything? Nobody's here? Motion to adjourn?